Go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, January 3, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
I will. Tim Hale. Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
I'm expecting Dee McKee. Robert Yount.
Here.
Thank you. Moki Two.
Here.
Jesse Sumner.
Here.
Ron Bernier.
Here, and I'll be there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. You do have a call, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything the members would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull Resolution 23-004.
Is there anything else? Anyone else would like to pull? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Is it IM-23-008? Am I supposed to do that now? No?
No.
Okay.
After I read them into the record, Assembly Member Two, then the mayor will ask if there's any discussion. You're welcome.
Okay. Is there anything else to be pulled? Is there any other changes in the agenda? Hearing none, then the agenda is approved as presented. They'll all stand, please, and Acting Deputy Mayor Sumner for the last time, maybe?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no minutes of the preceding meetings. Agency reports. I don't see anybody from either one of the three cities. I don't see anybody from the school district. And Todd, we have a report from the state, sir, please. Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year, Madam Mayor, and members of the Assembly, staff, Todd Smalden with the governor's office. I don't have a whole lot or anything new, but I did want to be here tonight and to see if, after more time processing the governor's budget, to see if anybody had any questions that I probably won't be able to answer, but I certainly could, with time, probably get answers. So I just wanted to make myself available to see if anybody had any questions tonight.
Does anyone have any questions? Anybody online have any questions?
This is Rob Yount. May I?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hey, Todd, how big is the dividend going to be this next year?
Well, the governor's proposal is a statutory PFD. That's the law. And until the legislature changes the law or gives some indication that they're interested in, you know, working on some kind of new formula, that is what he presented. In the past, he did present 50-50. That's when it looked like there might be enough legislative support to change that law with a vote of the people attached to it. But without that, he proposed a statutory PFD. So we will see what the legislature does with that. But statutory PFD would be about $3,900.
Okay. Further questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I hope to be able to attend on Thursday morning for the legislative priorities. I do have some other meetings, though, but I will try to attend. So thank you.
All righty. And there is no report from the Joint Assembly and School Board Committee because we have not met. Are there any public relations reports from any of the assembly? Okay, manager's report, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be relatively brief, but I wanted to give the Assembly, I guess, and the public a quick update on the December snow and wind event. We got, you know, I was talking to somebody this morning. I said, well, we're starting this year off better than we did this past year because at this time last year, we were on the wind. So we've already been through some snow and wind. I guess that's the good news. But I did want to share some of the services provided and a couple of stories that I think are just illustrative of the importance of some of the services the borough provides to its citizens. So the key takeaway here is that we did have a high call volume under some very challenging conditions, but all calls were answered. Over a four-day period, and this was over the Christmas Eve, Christmas Day weekend, we had 249 calls over a four-day period. That's about 62 calls per day average. However, 106 of those calls were on Christmas Eve day. So that's quite a bit of call volume for a single day. Around 3:00 AM during the worst of the blizzard, EMS crews stationed in Palmer walked through chest-deep drifts approximately a third of a mile to access a house of a woman with an altered mental status. Palmer Fire responded with snow machines in order to sled the patient out again. Under normal conditions, this response would have been on a plowed road. The crews did a fantastic job under very challenging conditions. Fire service area and rescue plow crews or plow folks were amazing, and most came in on their time off during the holiday. So a couple of observations, you know, every time we go through one of these incidents, we learn things. So one was that sometimes we'll need access to heavier snow-moving equipment. We actually had plow trucks, truck-mounted, pickup truck-mounted plows accompanying ambulances on calls because we couldn't get to residents, couldn't get in driveways to get patients out at times. We were also challenged in getting fuel deliveries to generators and apparatus because commercial deliveries were kind of having access issues and being able to get around as well. The other thing we learned, there was a commercial tractor-trailer accident that occurred, which included a spill. So our hazmat truck was not able to get to the scene because it's not a four-by-four. So that was one of the things we may have to take a look at in terms of just making sure that all the different apparatus that we have, hazmat being specialized, that we have the right equipment to get it to the scene. Obviously, there was, available staffing was a strain during the event. We did have a primary communications tower site outage. Fortunately, the backup plan worked and was implemented. There were no loss of communications, and the main system was restored within 24 hours. We did have the EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, spun up and staffed very minimally one night to kind of track through the evening and make sure that we were looped in with MACOM dispatch to make sure if things were to have escalated or spiraled a bit, that we would be able to jump on that quickly. MACOM dispatch did a great job working with the EOC for situational awareness, dispatching, and directing responders based on that awareness, as well as switching to our backup system. So we did get some trial run on some backup systems over this event, and for the most part, very fortunate that it worked as designed. As we have seen on a number of challenging winter weather events, resiliency is on display. And I just wanted to take a moment to, you know, thank our fire, EMS, rescue personnel, and our road maintenance personnel and contractors for the work that they did to get us through that event. Obviously, it varied a little bit depending on where you were, but we've seen, you know, we saw weather struggle as well, and I think our system all-in-all performed pretty well. I wanted to also share a quick story that occurred early Christmas Eve morning. This is really more speaks to preparedness as a community and public education and the importance of it. And this is, I'm going to read it verbatim from a resident, and this is about a carbon monoxide detector. So this email starts to read, "An incredible fire team saved our lives early Christmas Eve morning. Our carbon monoxide alarms went off at 3:30 AM on Christmas Eve morning. We thought it was just a malfunctioning alarm. As an afterthought, we called EMS, and a fire team from Station 62 was at our home within five minutes. They immediately detected carbon monoxide and traced its source to our outdoor standby generator. Snow had built up, and the exhaust formed a tunnel to the dryer-vent duct. They cleared the snow, vented the house, and waited for the levels to get to a safe reading. The team of three spent over an hour with us and no doubt saved our lives. Although we don't have their names, we want all to know how grateful we are to have such an amazing group of professionals looking out for the safety of people in the matsu." And I won't mention, obviously, the person's name, but I think that's just a great illustration of some of the things that you just don't know what you're going to come up against with some of these storms. And, you know, just seeing folks out there and knowing that we have a committed group of professionals that are out there, holiday or not, weather conditions and whatnot, providing that service. So I just wanted to take a couple moments and recognize that and say thank you. So that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Questions to the manager? Okay. So Mrs. Attorney, do you have a report? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
The clerk's report is in your red folder. It also contains the Thursday's agenda with the state delegation. That meeting does start at 10:00 AM on Thursday over at the LAO office in Wasilla, and breakfast will be starting at 9:30.
Questions or comments to the clerk? Okay. And then we have some citizens and other correspondents. Are there any comments on any of the citizens or other correspondents that were in the agenda? Okay, hearing none, and they are presented. Madam Clerk, would you read the IMs, please?
I will. IM-23-003 informing the Assembly of the submittal of a form requesting state forestry capital improvement program funding for the Saw Crew Project. IM-23-007 informing the Assembly of the manager's signature on six amendments for a time extension only to the remaining fiscal year 2013, fiscal year 2014, and fiscal year 2015 designated legislative grants from the Alaska Department of Commerce, Community and Economic Development, Division of Community and Regional Affairs. IM-23-008 reporting conclusion of contract number 22-156B with Northern Asphalt Construction for Silver Drive and Sazbo Bluff Road Improvement Projects. IM-23-009 reporting conclusion of contract for 22-142B with Granite Construction for Nelson Road Pathway Project. IM-23-011 reporting conclusion of contract number 22-1662B with Big Dipper Construction for Trunk Road Railroad Overpass Washout Repairs Project. IM-23-12 reporting conclusion of contract for bid 21-150B with Roger Hickel for a final contract amount of $5,402,220.22 for the Willow Library Construction and Community Center upgrades.
Are there any comments on the IMs? Yes, Assemblyperson Two.
I would like to comment, Madam Mayor, on IM-23-008.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
My comment is, reading through here, it was a contractor, Northern Asphalt. Not only did he do the project for less than his quoted price, there was no change orders. And I was just very impressed that there was no change orders and that he actually did it for less than his bid price. So I'd say kudos to him, and thank you.
Excellent. Yep. Let the record show that Assemblyperson Key has arrived at 6:14. Under special orders, we do not have any people that have requested to be heard. Public hearings, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 23-003 and ordinance accepting and appropriating an additional $210,000 from the Alaska State Department of Transportation and Public Facilities Regional Transportation Organization Project for the performance of pre-metropolitan planning organization planning efforts with accompanying Resolution 23-1 and Resolution approving the amended scope of work and budget and extending in a date of completion through May 31, 2024 to support pre-metropolitan planning organization planning activities. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this press star three.
Staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor DeVries and members of the Assembly. Sorry for the tongue-twister launey of a title on that legislation, but what you have before you tonight is the acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Department of Transportation to continue to support the planning efforts for the Matsu Metropolitan Planning Organization. So on Thursday of last week, we did hear, we won the prize. We are now designated as an urbanized area. We have not received the maps yet, so we don't quite know what the designation means in terms of geography, but we do, we have reached the threshold of over 50,000 people within a contiguous area, which means, A, we have to form a metropolitan planning organization within one year, and we have to start managing stormwater differently. So this legislation is to accept additional funds from DOT to continue to form the MPO.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm like, oh, did I say something wrong?
Sorry, Madam Chair, sorry, Cam.
Okay, no problem. And so we will now be on a timeline. The past three years, we've been practicing to form the MPO, waiting for the census designation to happen, but now that the designation has happened, we will have to have the organization fully stood up by December 28, 2023. We expect to submit our operating agreement paperwork to the governor's office somewhere between March and April, and then hope for a formal designation in July and open an office and hire a director and keep on planning. So that is where we're at right now, and I will take any questions, if you have any, about this grant funding.
Any questions to staff? Okay, I guess this is, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 22-003 and Resolution 23-001. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the Assembly on either this ordinance or this resolution? You have three minutes. Okay, seeing no one come forth, do we have anybody online, sir? We do not. So one last chance for anybody here. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing. And Acting Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-003 and Resolution 23-001.
Okay, is there a discussion? Is there any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, oh, I'm sorry. Did somebody say something? No, okay. Hearing no objection, then the legislation passes. The next item we have is audience participation. We do have one person that is signed up. So Craig, if you'd like to come forth and address the Assembly on any item?
So Ms. Launey, if you could not start the clock on me quite yet. Mr. Brown, I want to agree with you on the outstanding job that our emergency responders do. I think they do a fantastic job here in the borough. Different things that I've heard, I've not had to use them myself personally, but yeah, I think they do a remarkable job. Okay, ready?
State your name, please.
My name is Craig Odom, O-D-O-M, and I stand here before you yet again to let some of you members know how disappointed I am in you for not following the code. We had people that voted on an issue we know as Beverly Lake Management Plan. The majority of the people, a clear majority, won that vote as each and every one of you were voted in. I'm just curious, I wish I would have taken the time to look and see what the percentages was and how much did you win your seat by? Yeah, was it two-thirds? Was it whatever? But one vote, one person, the bigger number wins. You don't pander to the minority. That's why you have codes in place. We, the people, we followed the codes that you guys put in place, and yet, at the blink of an eye, an Assembly member can submit an amendment, and the people that put the thing forward, they don't have a say in it? We just have to accept that? What kind of Mickey Mouse kangaroo court is that? It's a banana republic. It's no better than the people in Washington, DC. Pick and choose, do what you want, how you want, when you want, and serve yourself. Why are the people even here, then, if you're not going to follow the code? That's my question. Why do we have laws in place? Why do we have rules in place? Why do we have ordinances in place to follow them? So we're compliant, we're obedient, we're conditioned, citizens of the communities, and we're not supposed to speak up and rebel? We're just supposed to be almighty and bow to those above us that sit in the hierarchy of the high places? We're talking grassroots government here at the lowest local level possible. You should be disappointed in yourself for not following the majority of the people that voted on this issue. Besides, we did follow your code to a T. But yet, the people, the majority of the people, were overruled because somebody on the Assembly decided to submit an amendment, and the people that did all the legwork for two years on this amendment for this lake management plan didn't even have a voice? We're just supposed to roll over and accept it and take it? That's wrong, people. That is wrong, and you know it's wrong. And I don't know that you could be happy with yourself in operating that way. I just hope when you go back and go home, look yourself in the mirror. Hopefully, you get a good night's sleep. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Assembly? That's the only person we had signed up. Do we have anybody online, sir? We do not.
Is this not appropriate? Do I, can I not speak with the gentleman who just spoke?
Shouldn't, I mean, normally, we don't.
No.
No. You can.
I'll talk to you after.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to address the Assembly under audience participation? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, then audience participation is closed. The next item is the consent agenda, and Madam Clerk?
Resolution 23-002, Resolution accepting the resignation of Assemblymember Sumner and declaring the District 6 Assembly seat vacant as of January 17, 2023. IM-23-001 requesting authorization for destruction of ballots from the November 8, 2022 regular borough election. IM-23-002 approval extension of a final completion date of July 31, 2023 for Contract 21P with Bezic, Durst, Seizer Architects and an additional change order authority in the amount of $65,000 for the design of Houston Middle School Repairing Reconstruction Project. And IM-23-3 authorization to purchase one precast concrete restroom from CXT, precast concrete products in the amount of $157,891.50.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objection? Okay, hearing and seeing none, and the consent agenda has been approved. And now, do we take up the one item? No, okay.
Resolution 23-4, A Resolution requesting that the State of Alaska adopt a numerical standard for operating a vehicle under the influence of marijuana or a numerical standard for the presumption of being under the influence of marijuana. It was pulled by Assemblymember Nowers.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Do I need to move it first?
You need to move it first, Stefan.
I move Resolution 23-004, and I pulled it, this seems like a really good idea for there to be a standard for determining the influence of people under marijuana who are driving. My question is for the sponsors of it. It seems like, looking around, that it's been difficult, some states have come up with a numerical standard, but it seems like there's, it's more complicated than with alcohol, and other states have come up with different standards. So I wanted to ask Mr. Yount and Mr. Hale about just striking numerical and asking the state to come up with a standard that can be used for law enforcement to determine influence, but not locking them in potentially to a numerical standard just because of the problematic nature of that or the problems with it, but asking them to have a standard. So I wanted to ask the makers of that if they would be open to the idea of just asking for a standard.
Okay.
This is Assemblymember Hale.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Tim. So, yes, I'm totally open to that. I think ultimately, at the end of the day, they're going to make, they're going to make a decision based on what they feel is best anyways. But I will point out that Colorado, Illinois, Montana, and Washington all have five nanograms per milliliter, and that's numerical. Nevada and Ohio are all the way down at two nanograms. And then Arizona, Delaware, Georgia, Indiana, Iowa, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Oklahoma, Rhode Island, South Dakota, Utah, and Wisconsin are absolutely zero tolerant states. So they're, they're zero nanograms. So I think that's probably kind of excessive, personally, maybe not, I don't know, but that's definitely on the very, very, very conservative side of the law. So, yeah, I'm open to any ideas Stefan has, for sure. I think ultimately, at the end of the day, the state's going to, if they do anything at all, they're going to do whatever their body comes up with, regardless if we ask them to make it numerical or something else. So, thank you.
Assemblyperson Hale, did you have comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any problem with striking the word numerical. In fact, I would make a motion that we amend by striking the word numerical wherever it appears in the document.
Okay. So we have an amendment to Resolution 23-004, striking the word numerical in any place that it appears in the document. Discussion? Yes, Assemblyperson McKee?
I don't know if it's the math teacher in me or what, but I'm a real numbers person. And when you're talking to somebody who's DUI with alcohol, you've got a number to go to, and it's flat standard, it's not subjective, it's right there. And like I said last time, you know, I'm sorry, dude, you're one toe over the line, you go to jail, or you don't. What do we got here? We have nothing. If we don't have a number in there, I don't see how you can enforce that because then subjectivity comes in. So I would disagree with removing numerical.
Okay. Further discussion from any of the, yes. Further discussion from any of the, yes.
I'm not an expert in this topic at all. But in looking at the National Conference of State Legislatures and some of the other information online, it outlined, and AAA, it outlined some of the issues with marijuana that it doesn't necessarily help you determine somebody's intoxication just by a number, because it stays in the system. Don't ask me to, again, explain the medical stuff behind it. So if the state can come up with, you know, a numerical standard that they can support, I'm okay with that. I just don't, I just want to leave the door open. Some of the other states have used sort of a, you're, the signs of showing that you're impaired driving, which is obviously more subjective, not objective. But I just wanted to leave the door open. I do think it's, we need some kind of standard that law enforcement can use. I just want to allow the state flexibility to come up with that. And just in looking at how other states are trying to deal with this, I just thought we could strike standard. And if they can, if they want to come up with numerical, I'm happy to do that. But I also just wanted to leave the door open. That was just my thought on it.
Deputy Mayor?
Wait, so are you asking, are you asking to strike standard?
No, no. Asking for a standard, just speaking to why I brought up the suggestion that we strike numerical. So I'm supporting Tim's amendment.
Acting Deputy Mayor, comments?
I'm not sure if I support this at all. For one thing, there's about zero chance the legislature's going to do anything on this. I mean, it'd be a miracle if they even pass a budget on time. And for another thing, we're asking to criminalize something that, to my knowledge, is not a large problem. I mean, I know that alcohol-related DUIs are a significant risk to life and are a substantial problem. But I've not heard of this huge unaddressed issue of marijuana-related DUI fatalities. So you are asking the state to criminalize something for which potentially, and I assume you're asking for the same standards to alcohol-related DUI for something that is not as large of a threat to life. So I would object to this just generally.
Further discussion on the amendment to strike the word numerical? Is there?
Just to note, again, in my Googling on this topic, that there are some indications that potentially accidents are increasing as a result of marijuana. What they're seeing is a doubling in the number of accidents where the person has some level of marijuana in their system. But the question is, is it correlation or causation for the accident? So I think it's something that it's worth, because we're a legal state and we're considering permits to allow people to smoke at places that we look at it on the state level, because it's something new for us, so.
Acting Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Well, I don't myself, you know, use marijuana. But I would say that my sister does quite heavily. And I'm not sure that it's not a permanent impairment situation. But I'd point out that you might also associate that sort of an increase in vehicle fatalities to people that, say, have toxoplasmosis. We wouldn't institute blood tests for them. And, you know, well, it's certainly true that they have a higher accident rate, you know. So just ascribing an accident rate to a certain percentage of the population based on a blood test is not maybe something we want to go to, if it's not a, I mean, a substantial problem, so.
Further discussion on the amendment? Yes, Assemblyperson.
Yeah, to Mr. Sumner's point, you were talking about it being a legal activity to smoke dope in the state of Alaska, and that's fine, I got it. But then you're comparing it to alcohol, which is also legal. So I guess I don't get your point there. We have alcohol, drinking alcohol is a legal activity, as long as you don't go with a .08. And I don't know why, if you have a substance that can cause an altered state, and I do have some experience with marijuana, so I do know a little bit more about it than if I had never had that. And I can tell you that the difference between marijuana when I was a kid, smoking it overseas, and now, somebody used a name the other day, I won't repeat it, because I'll probably screw it up, and that would be embarrassing. But the percentage of the actual drug itself in marijuana today is multiple times what it used to be. It's not any longer that just nice, sweet, soft. I don't care so much about things anymore. It's really an intoxicant now. And I teach a class in drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. And so I've done a little more research on it than I would otherwise have. So this scares me, when you don't have something. I don't like the subjectivity of leaving numerical out. If they can come up with numerical for alcohol, why can't they do the same thing for marijuana? And I won't take up any more time, but I feel pretty strongly about this. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. You know, we're talking about a presumptive standard here. And I don't think it necessarily needs to be a numerical number. They can develop a presumptive. Really, I don't think that we need to micromanage what the state is going to develop as a presumptive standard. And, you know, so the more general we make this, the better off we are, I think. That's all.
Further questions? Discussion on the amendment? Okay. Assemblyperson Bernier had been on the phone. He did now, has arrived in person. We are on Resolution 23-004. There has been an amendment to pass, but there's now been, I mean, a motion to pass. Now there's been an amendment to remove the word numerical in this whole thing. Okay, good. I just wanted to be sure. So, all righty. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to vote then.
Everybody in the room can go ahead and vote on the amendment. Assemblymember Hale?
Yes.
Assemblymember Yount? It has, excuse me, passed with Assemblymember McKee and Yount opposed.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have another amendment. I would move to strike Paragraphs 11 and 12, Whereas's 11 and 12. I'd speak to it briefly. Basically, this just removes any mention of nanograms per milliliter. Again, I think when we're talking about a presumptive standard, we don't need to be getting down into the weeds, pun intentional, and, you know, kind of telling the legislature what kind of presumptive standard they need to develop. I think whatever that they do come up with will be, you know, appropriate, if they even do come up with something. So, you know, just trying to make this a little bit more general and saying, you know, we would like a presumptive standard, without getting down into the nitty-gritty details.
Okay. There's an amendment to strike 11 and 12, the 11 and 12 Whereas's. And those are, whatever the, wait, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. Is Whereas, there are standards in other states. And 12 is, these standards range from zero tolerance. Are those the two, sir, that you are moving to remove?
Yes, ma'am. The two Whereas clauses that deal with nanograms per milliliter.
Okay. All righty. So has everybody been able to find those two? So they're on page 2 or 3. And they're the standard, these are standards, and these standards range. Those two Whereas's is the amendment. Discussion on the amendment? Okay, is there any objection to the amendment? Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
I object.
Okay.
I think you're gutting the thing when you do that. And it's all about safety. That's bottom line. And I think that just puts us a little more at risk.
Okay. All righty. Any other comments? Okay, so Madam Clerk?
If I can get everybody to go ahead and vote in the room on the amendment, yes.
On those two amendments, to remove those two Whereas's.
Assemblymember Yount?
No.
Assemblymember Hale?
Yes.
Passed with Assemblymember 2, McKee and Yount opposed.
Any further action on the main motion as amended to adopt Resolution 23-004? Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
No, I just, I object.
I'm sorry?
I object.
You object, okay. No other discussion, then, Madam Clerk? We're ready to vote on the resolution adoption of serial number 23-004, correct?
Yep.
With the two amendments that have passed.
Correct.
Okay.
If I can get the members in the room to go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Hale?
Yes.
Assemblymember Yount?
Yes.
It passed with Assemblymember Sumner and Bernier opposed.
All righty. So that takes care of the resolutions. There is no unfinished business. There are no vetoes. And there are a couple items for new business. Madam Clerk?
Introduction for Public Hearing on January 17 is Ordinance 23001. Ordinance 23004 with accompanying Resolution 23003.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the clerk, or read into the record by the clerk, and set the public hearings for January 17, 2023.
Okay. Is there discussion about the setting of these introductions and public hearing? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the legislation then has been introduced. Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. Enhance 911 Advisory Board, Dwayne Shelton, Whitney Daugh, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Dwayne Shelton, Big Lake RSA Number 21, Pat Daniels, Knick RSA Number 17, Flint Selby.
Is there any discussion? Any objection to the vacancy report being approved? Okay, seeing none, then it has been approved. We have no other new business. We do have a referral. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 235, An Ordinance Prohibiting On-Site Consumption of Marijuana Until Such Time as the State of Alaska, adopts a numerical standard for operating a vehicle while under the influence of marijuana or a numerical standard for the presumption of being under the influence of marijuana.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to refer Ordinance 23-005 to the Planning Commission for 180 days.
Okay. Any objection? Okay, seeing no objection, then the legislation has been referred. There is no reconsiderations. We are now ready for parting comments. So Madam Attorney, you have any parting comments?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Assemblyperson McKee, parting comments? No. Assemblyperson 2, parting comment?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I agree that our EMS, our fire stations and ambulances do a great job, and so do our road maintenance people. But I think this last event really shows that how real important, how much does the road maintenance really mean to our community? The road maintenance, without the road maintenance, our whole community stops. It gets locked down. So I know lately that, well, probably all the time that I've been on the Assembly, I've been fighting about road maintenance issues and this and that. But I think the storm really, really puts it out there for everybody to see how important and how every single person is affected by that. So I'd say everybody did a good job, and it was really a lot of hard work that had to be done, fast thinking. And I think the contractors learned a lot by it. And I think that the EMS also did learn that they can't go out there with pickups and try to beat up a four-foot berm. It's not going to happen. They need to go out there with an 80, 60,000 to 80,000-pound tool with a big V plow on the front. We're going to war, is how I always said it when I was in the maintenance department. So, yeah. So I think this was a bad thing, but a good thing. I think a lot of people learned a lot of stuff. So that's what I'd like to say.
Assemblyperson Hale, parting comments?
I guess that we're off to a good start with such a short first meeting of 2023.
Deputy Mayor, parting comments? Your last chance here.
So I guess this is my last regular meeting. And I'd just like to say that it's been a great privilege and honor to serve on the Borough Assembly. You know, when we came in, we had somewhat of a budget crisis. And we had an earthquake, and fires, and floods, and global pandemic. And, you know, I think that, I'm really proud of how we've navigated through all that. I think that, you know, the Matsui Borough stands as an example for the rest of the state. And I have full faith in all of you and everybody in the Matsui Borough to, you know, carry on things. And I'm sure that we'll continue to be the best place to live in Alaska. So thank you.
Assemblyperson Nowers?
I also wanted to thank the road service crews and the EMS for putting up with some horrific conditions. I know another story was a rescued corgi dog. So that fell down, went down a slope and into a 20-foot hole, and they had to. So that's a little less than, you know, getting into some of those folks who needed it. I also want to thank the manager for his updates during that time to kind of let us know the status of how things were going. I really appreciated that. And also want to say thank you and good luck to my person to the left. I noticed that you're to the left, maybe you're to the right of me. I've really appreciated having you on the Assembly. You read your packet, you think about things, you show up, and you have some really good ideas. And you're generating some really smart ideas. And I've always appreciated the questions that you've asked. So we're going to miss you on the Assembly, but I'm glad we're going to have you in June. And you will have some people at your door down there from this end. Look forward to seeing you down there.
Assemblyperson Yount, parting comments?
Yeah, thank you. Again, great job by everybody involved with helping remove the snow. I think, as Moki mentioned, it's put a real stress on the system, and there will be things that we can learn from it. It's not, you know, this is, a lot of people said a 50-year snow event. It wasn't, we got a lot of snow in a short amount of time, because we did. Then we got a really cold snap after that, which kind of granulated it all. It made it perfect to blow around with the big windstorm. And so this was not, this was not our common, you know, this was not an average month or anything by that means. But it will be a good opportunity for us to learn. I'd like to mention, you know, like Ms. McKee was saying earlier, I think when it comes to protecting society and the responsibility we should all take as, you know, society when we're going to drive a vehicle. You know, marijuana's not been legal that long in Alaska. And I imagine there was a lot of years, it was so long ago, none of us would remember. But I imagine there was a lot of years when alcohol was legal, but there was no driving standard whatsoever. I know one of my uncles was ran over in Alaska. He'd killed a nine-years-old in 1959, before he became a state. And the gentleman that ran him over and killed him only served one year, or one day in jail. He was out the next day and never served. So things change, is where I'm going with this, right? And so as Mr. Sumner pointed out, we probably don't hear about this a lot, but we're also not looking for it, right? So most of us only hear what we want to hear, and that's from the media that we choose to consume. And so I called the state troopers. And so I called the state troopers and I called also the police department. And they do have a lot of times, they, you know, according to them, that they pull people over. They have no standard to go by. And it, and it makes it really difficult on them when they think somebody is intoxicated with marijuana. And so I will be filing for reconsideration. Acting Deputy Mayor, you got one over on me there. I didn't, I didn't realize it, but it took me a minute to think about it there on this, this referral. I believe you read into the record 180 days. And if that is the case, I will file for reconsideration immediately after the meeting and ask that we reduce that to 90 days for Ordinance 23-005. So again, we could, I'll talk to the clerk after the meeting. But if that was 180 days read into the record, I will be filing for reconsideration. Other than that, Happy New Year to everybody. Jesse, I'm excited for you. Have fun down there in Juneau. Do try to take up things as important as public safety. I think, you know, as I read into the record earlier, there, there's, you know, 20 states in this country that have set a nanogram per milliliter, and more than half of them have a zero tolerance. And in a way, I, I think it is something important that we should take up down there. And other than that, everybody enjoy your evening.
Madam Clerk, comments? Mr. Mayor, comments? Assemblyperson Burnier, comments?
I want to thank all our first responders. And I want to thank Jesse for your service here in the valley. And keep, I know you'll keep the valley's best interest in mind on the way down there. And I just want to ask God to thank, God bless everyone here. Thank you for our snowstorm that we had and the hardships that we went through in the trials. And I just want to pray for our valley and everyone here. In Jesus's name, amen.
So I have a couple of comments. Is there any objection for authorizing the clerk to do the vacancy ad? And also for her to design a general application for those that are interested in filling the vacancy in the Assembly District? Is there any objections to either one of those? Okay, thank you. We have no executive session, and we will adjourn at, what, 6:53? 51? 51? Okay, 6:51. Not a record, but it's nice.
Good way to start a year, huh?